I've called the meeting to order. Michael, if you would give us our invocation.
If you have any thought, we're grateful for the opportunity to serve and hopefully better our community here in Dalton Township. We pray for guidance and direction and decisions that are made this evening. And we leave this in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. If you join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any people welcome for expression?
Michael.
Here.
Christie.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Jeffrey.
Here.
Lee.
Have I heard from him?
And Nola is absent. Tracy is here.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. Someone wants to make a motion? Make a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Michael, do we have support? Support. Motion by Christie, any discussion among the board? Are there none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have approval of past meeting minutes. These are from the eighth of January. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Christie, do we have support? Support by Tracy, any discussion among the board? Are there none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the church reports. Questions, thoughts, ideas, comments, concerns on the church report. There you go. We'll put it down fine. Next, we have paying the bills. Do you have the motion to pay the bills? Like that motion to pay the bills? Motion by Michael, do we have support? Most support. Support by Scott, any discussion among the board? Are there none? We'll call a vote.
Michael.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Christie. Tracy, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the fire department report, if you would, chief.
It's been very busy, a hundred and four calls. Fortunately, due to the software, I'm not able to track everything that's ever want to, so I can't give full response times, but we're still well earned at that time of the mark. Guarantee it, just don't know exactly what it was. They have those that are going to fix it and that's hopefully next month they're going to have it fixed. Uh, we submitted our budget to you. Uh, we're looking decent, I think, even with hires. Uh, and obviously we have four applicants in our process, uh, we'll be hiring three. We will finish up, uh, part of the testing tomorrow and then at the end of the month. And next board meeting, I'll come to you with, with these three conditional offers, obviously, as the board approves that and then completion and passing successfully of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. At the end of the month, issue. An issue. And again, we are pleased that we submitted our budget to you, uh, balanced again for the fourteenth consecutive year.
Thank you much. Next, we have the planning commissioner report. Seeing as Lee is not here, it is included in the package. There was largely one item on there, which was about an auto repair home-based business and that ended up passing. There was some discussion on it. Next, we have our planning and zoning reports, if you would, chief.
In January, I issued five permits, three were for new houses, one was for a remodel and one was for a sign. We investigated six cases for enforcement action. And, uh, two properties were partially cleaned up as part of court orders.
Permit. Thank you. Next, we have our maintenance reports, if you would, Nate.
Yeah, um, put snow removal on here. That's thirty days, about a mile. Waste except for one weekend in particular. For ninety-three and a half hours in one week, that's fine. Um, budget calculations, like she said, we've been working on that, getting that already. I've been working on some election ramps, so we don't have to use the temporary door we have anymore. And we have a new transfer station attendant, his name is Tom, and he's so far working out great. He's treated nicely. Good guy. Probably on that, that's it.
Thank you. Next, we have the cemetery report. If you would, Heather.
So mine is actually the annual, of course, so it's a little bit more late than the sizes, but I, that, I put in the packet as well. So I did, uh, here at a glance, so what has changed? Year the beginning of twenty twenty-four, I took over the role of cemetery coordinator. Um, Tracy has been working with me, training me, uh, coming up with good projects. Also done some educations that had helped me learn more about what could be done differently at the cemeteries. Uh, some operating issues that we had this year, the Twin Lake sprinkler system, and there is still a repair that needs to be done for that in this upcoming year. Um, there was trees that had to be removed after storms, um, and then uh, the building in Oakland was painted, Nate has been working with the maintenance team to get a lot of those projects done. Um, there were a few things that I would like to see accomplished for this year. Again, first being the repair of the sprinkler system. Uh, we need to repair the veterans memorial and the Twin Lake cemetery. I talked with Nate, sounded like who's going to be, um, heading up that. And then fence repairs, uh, potentially for both cemeteries and Twin Lake Cemetery to have roads redone. Um, and then a land survey for Oakland Cemetery, which is super important because it needs to be remapped. And, uh, we've had green burial interest, which could take place in the wooded part of Oakland. Um, why we would need to have that done. Um, I did ask that there be thirty thousand dollars placed in capital outlay for those projects to take place. And, uh, I did also add in that letter some long-term goals, um, trying to create, uh, you know, five-year plan and further down the road, projects that could take place. Um, as a saving and maintaining, maintaining your cemeteries.
Excellent. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Next, we have official updates, county commissioner Seer. They called me right before the meeting left a message just saying that he wasn't going to be able to make it, but he does like our meetings, which is very nice. Uh, I know we do have someone here from Bumstead's office, do you have anything to note?
Christine, I had trouble with, uh, sending the Bumstead's office. What I can say is the governor, um, produced her budget a couple of weeks ago and from calling the session starting tomorrow to go over that. And so Senator Bumstead serves on the appropriations committee, he's vice chair. He will be instrumental in, you know, the budget, hopefully putting, trying to save for our district. Um, working on that, also working on the infrastructure with our roads in the state and bringing down, um, personally a lot of, uh, the dent stuff with the schools and, and for the students, so he'll, those are the things he's focusing on. I don't have anything to report, I hope things go well with the budget, but many of you have any questions or want to reach out, please call the office in Lansing or talk to me and, um, we could help you, so let us know.
I appreciate, I appreciate his email. It's, it's, it's things that he puts out every month.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Nice, you're, nice feedback, yeah.
Yeah, I do. He keeps us pretty well informed on, on things that are going on, so.
Yes, thank you. And I, I expect in that spot, that in the next handful of months, obviously, we're going to have candidates for the county in various forums, so possibly the state, the township, that are going to want to speak here as well, which is part of why I added that. So it'll, it'll be coming up as an important piece of the agenda, probably. Next, we have our first public comment on agenda items, uh, three minutes, if you would, uh, limit yourself. Feel free to let us know what you think. Yeah, go on up. Let us know who you are. Which is the purpose of your comment, I assume.
Jean Cooley, three, three, four, one, zero, Putnam. I'm an agenda item. That's why I'm on your agenda as a possible board review member. Why do I, I'm here, I can answer any questions. So, let you know who you're talking about.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
And Jean included a self-written bio under that item as well.
Robin, you say two, seven, nine, five, Midlake Road. You know, it's about the property. About fourth and east. Um, I know that, you know, Jeff has told me that there is other additional properties that might be available for a community center. Um, I just hope that whoever is purchasing or interested in purchasing, and if you decide to go along with that, you know, that it's something that's going to be, um, something more pleasing to the eye and our community. And I, I would prefer somebody to put some housing there, maybe a quad or duplex or something, anything, but, you know, if we can't have it for the community center, at least, you know, we need housing so badly in this area, especially for younger people. But, um, I hate to see it, I know you mentioned maybe storage units, and it's like, no. I don't think that's
No, I don't believe storage.
Okay, good, I hope not, but anyway. Either way, I'm just, you know, I hope you guys really are careful about, um, about selling that, because I think there's still better uses for it. You know, that's community related.
Thank you.
But, anyone else, uh, anything else? All right. We'll move on to our first decision item, this BHS insurance. Over the last couple of years, we've pushed more over to BHS. Uh, I've included our health stuff in here, we offer good benefits, um, which is important, I think, for the township. I think employees realize, uh, the upside of those ones that get in, a little bit more than what you saw, but still important. And we switched more stuff over to BHS, they seem decent, uh, to work with the part of the power plan, which is, uh, participating plan. It's actually one of the spots open, Tracy was just bringing it up today, so it's controlled by township, uh, officials around the organization on three-year terms. And the board would be approving this as part of the budget, but with the insurance starting on April. Um, it's good to get it done a little bit early so that we know that rolling forward, we have paid work in, in place.
I'm making a motion to approve the BHS, the H S insurance renewals for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
Motion by Tracy, do we have a support? Support by Christie, do we have any discussion among the board?
Which plan is it?
And so on, Christie, or, yep, so I'm the first one, at bottom, so page two. Um, and so this is our current, so this would be the renewal. Right, so the one forty, I said it a little bit, right, one hundred and forty to one hundred and fifty-five. And these are all the versions of what, um, of what the plan could be.
So I guess I do I need to adjust my motion to keep it the same plan that we've had?
That's the renewal that's proposed there, I think we'd have to adjust the motion if we were changing it. Uh, since we're renewing the same one, or that's what the motion is, is to renew the same one. Anything else? That's, roll call vote.
Tracy, yes. Christie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Lee? Oh, sorry. Crossed off the wrong one. Michael?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the board review poverty guidelines. These come up every year in the state over the last number of years, I'm not sure exactly how long, keeps restricting the options that the board review has, and so relatively minor on the adjustments largely in these documents, it's changing over the dates, one definition item. But we do need to renew them every year, and these are for people to vote in board reviews for tax exemptions. We need to review all, all the documents, so that's all it is. We have a motion for the board review, poppy guy.
I make motion to approve these requirements and policy and guidelines for hardship exemption.
Motion by Tracy, do we have a support? Most support, that's, support by Scott, any discussion among the board? Are there none? Roll call vote.
Tracy, yes. Scott?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Thank you. Michael.
Motion passes. Next, we have the land sale policy. This is what we had as a discussion, not been done before, is that if we're doing something in particular, in this case, the demarcation being size of the property, they can make a larger impact on the township, and so the township board might want to have, uh, consideration in what's actually happening with the property. That's what come out, came out of the discussion was ten acres, if we wanted to adjust this, we'd have to do it verbally. So I've written it here, just in red letters, under two B, if the property under consideration is ten or more acres, the township board will look at proposals for use of the property as part of the bid. Right, if they're going to use it as residential, or commercial, or what type of commercial, whatever it may be, if there so, if we were selling off a large part, right now, we just take a bid, we just take a number of how much you bid on it.
Right.
So if we're selling off a large piece, and mostly pieces under that we'll assume are going residential, someone's putting a house on it, something like that. But something over that could be some sort of developments, not a commercial or residential. It's idea, because it could have a large impact on, on the community, as well as the tax pay, it's been a number of factors.
I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the updated land sale policy.
Motion by Michael, do we have support? Support by Scott, any discussion among the board? Are there none? Roll call vote.
Michael.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Tracy, yes.
Christie?
Jeffrey? Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the parks and recreation advisory committee resolution. And so we hand this, uh, as discussion before, and look at, uh, updated a few things in here. One, the majority of our interest came from people that were already on other boards, participate in the township in some way, with planning commissions, on board appeals, board review, something like that. Some from outside, I previously limited that to one person from those other boards, this has changed it to two. I included a list of parks that excluded cemeteries, because we have a cemetery coordinator, separate set of ordinances for that. Um, otherwise, basically the same, I think I made one other adjustment in here, I added an alternate, um, for five, not completely necessary, but we had a decent amount of interest, which is good, and I think we'll be able to keep five positions adequately filled.
I'll make a motion to approve Michael Bennett, Marvin Nash, Mike
We're the step before. Oh, we're the step, my bad, so we're on the one with the resolution. Yep, so it'd be one, one page before. Yeah, you're all right, you're on to the next step, that's okay.
First, we have to approve the resolution establishing the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, right?
Yep, that's the one.
So make a motion to approve that.
Part of this motion by Scott, do we have a support? Support by Christie, was that? Yes. Any discussion among the board? Are there none? Roll call vote.
Scott?
Uh, yep.
Christie?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Now, we have, next, because we had enough interest, I thought about pushing this off until next month, especially if there wasn't enough interest. But because there was, we might as well put the people on these committees, I've included everyone, um, that has proposed on here as one motion. If there's, if there's Scott's person, it can be divided up. Uh, but we have, uh, the five regular members, and this would include, uh, Michael, as previously discussed, as the trustee. He sits on this board along with an alternate, they've all included bu, uh, bios other than Michael, uh, who can, you know, speak on his own behalf, uh, if he wanted to, and that is part of the discussion. So this is filling those positions and getting it going, now that it exists. Now, does anyone want to make a motion?
Did you want to take that, Scott?
Yes.
Now that it has been established by resolution, I will make the motion to approve, uh, Michael Bennett, Marvin Nash, Mike Somerville, Randall Lemoine.
Lemoine.
Lemoine. And Mark Grant as regular members. And Todd Howland as an alternate member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Support. For our motion by Scott, support by Tracy, do we have any other discussion on that? It's, uh, it is a good group of people, if you read through their bios on their qualifications, it, it's a, it's a nice spread of experience over life. Roll call vote.
Scott?
Yep.
Tracy, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
Motion passes. Next, we have board review member. Board review is a three-person board, so if you have someone go down, it's a big mistake or something like that, it gets really tight. You know, all of your votes have to be unanimous, if you have two people go down, it's then we're on sketchy ground for legally holding a meeting for the board review, and we have to. You can have an alternate on this board, according to state law. Jean is interested in it, seems to be a good fit for it, we've had a few discussions. He's included a written bio in here as well, obviously spoke at a public comment, if anyone wants to ask him questions. But this is my proposal for an alternate for the board review.
Make that motion to approve Eugene Cooley as alternate member of the board review.
Motion by Christie, do we have support? All support. Support by Michael, any discussion among the board? Are there none? Roll call vote.
Christie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes, for the holdup.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Christie, yes.
Motion passes, so make sure you get with Tracy within ten days to get sworn in, special state law, just on that board. And that issue before, so it's learned the hard way. Next, we have water policy resolution, this is a very minor adjustment, uh, two meter fees essentially making a pass-through cost. That's it. We have a motion, uh, the water policy resolution. The meter fees, so
Meter fees.
It's this line, any, so any meter size that's put in for water, the cost is the cost of the meter in installation. So it's not establishing a certain amount, and it could be higher or lower than what it actually costs, it just passes the cost through.
These rates are fluctuating so much and so often that I would do it, just go.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to approve the resolution to amend the speed to the uniform water rate for
Motion by Tracy, do we have a support? All support. Support by Michael, any discussion among the board? Are there none? Roll call vote.
Christie, yes. Michael?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the land sale request on Fourth Street and East Street, we heard the public comment on this. This has been, this partially, we've talked about it the last few years, because there was the, the negotiation with the religious organization who never got back to us, never made the request. So I assume they didn't get approval from the board when they were looking at it, but we resolved all of that. And, uh, and someone else, maybe, because we discussed it, so much became aware of it and has, has made the request. Uh, there is something else on this that'll, that'll become relevant, there, when it changed hands from the civic association to the religious organization, there was a restriction put on the deed that if it was sold, then the proceeds would go to the escape community foundation to become scholarships for kids going to Fulton, Whitehall, and Reese Puffer. I believe that that is legally eliminated, because it was taken back by the county. But if the board decides to move forward with it, obviously, we would decide if we want to do that or not. Michael. For this, uh, the request obviously would have to go through approvals through the planning commission and, and stuff like that, so it's informal, but as far as I understand, just essentially storage for a business, an individual one, not, not a storage. We have a motion on this one.
Motion to approve land sale to use true cash value and market comparable from realtor in, to consider setting a minimum for personal.
By Tracy? Do we have a support?
All support, yeah.
Support by Scott? Any discussion among the board? Are there no discussion, was there?
Well, you're saying that they want to use it for storage, John. They're not, they're not going to put a house on it.
Correct. Like, just a small storage building for Thursday. That was the discussion. Anything else? Roll call vote.
Tracy, yes. Scott?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
No.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have text my gun. And so we talked about this in the work session for the budget. It defines the twenty-five-hundred-dollar onboarding fee, essentially is discounted right now, but it has to be done before the end of February, that's why we're seeing it at this meeting in particular, instead of just as part of the budget. Uh, I'm, I'm not strict on that, if someone wants to make a motion, uh, that's fine, if someone had a discussion item on it before anyone felt comfortable making a motion, that's fine.
I think this is a great thing for, you know, if people want to sign up, and we can send out reminders to their, to their phones, like, hey, texts are coming up due this week. Um, we can let people know when absentee ballots are available, uh, remind the snowbirds to, um, you know, let us know where they went. Not because we're stocking, but because we have to get them mailed. So, I, I think there's a lot of good to it, so I'll make a motion to approve text my gun contract.
Motion by Tracy, do we have a support? I will support it, because I want to have a vote on it. Uh, but as, uh, as discussion from the board, I will say, I think if a lot of people used it, it would be a great thing. My hesitancy is in people using it, and if I have to make a prediction, I don't think it's going to be heavily used, so I'm not heavily in favor of it. Could be considered a worthy experiment, but
And if we don't try it, then we don't know.
It's true.
Can we pay the five thousand?
Five thousand a year?
For two years.
It's a two-year cut down. It's five thousand total for the two years.
No.
Each year.
And about the total for the two years.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this?
I'm, I, I'd also think it's a great communication tool if used, I think, our sheer size of just under ten thousand people will limit, limits its, um, efficacy, maybe that's a good word for it, it just, the way it's going to be used, at least right now, and I'm really not into a ten-thousand-dollar experiment, so.
Any other discussion? Or? Are there none? Roll call vote.
Tracy, yes.
Jeffrey?
No.
Michael?
No.
Scott?
No.
Christie?
No.
Motion does not pass. Next, we have our discussion item, the first one being the budget. And I have a few things that I wanted to hit in on here. Um, we saw in the work session where I had notes along below some of the line items with little explanations. Uh, like last year for the budget, I did that for each item. Some of the things that doesn't really seem necessary, seems overkill, but I wanted to do it for every, every item for sure last year. I think it makes sense to do it where relevant. If we're listing out specific things, uh, specific equipment that's being bought for some department or something like that, and it's just very explicit. Um, but of course it doesn't have to be done either. Uh, I do think that it's important to keep in mind that we're transitioning boards. So we can guarantee that the board won't be the same, the board that passes this budget won't be the same as when this budget came back. At least because I won't be there. So we'll know at least one position will change. Now, the other positions have the possibility of staying the same, right? So, but it's nice to have some of that in there for context that people understanding. Of course, they can look back at the minutes, the work sessions, videos. There's a lot of things for people to reference on why decisions are being made the way they're being made. But I wanted to get feedback on what the board thought about having those reasoning lines under things.
But offer free context. And uh, if you said some of us might not be here next year. So, um, anything we can do to, um, transition, you know, the communication going from one board to another board is a good thing. So I like that.
Any other strong opinions on that? Any which way? Our opinion is I'll just do a thing on line items that I consider relevant or useful. I got, I posted, you probably won't.
I agree. Uh, like the capital L that's outlay on the second page, of course, the bottom, you know, referencing the town hall sign of the possible attract or purchase. Yeah. So it's good to see how that breaks down. Okay.
Uh, next we have, and I included in here, the transfer station price list. We, we looked at the finances in, in the work session. Alright, and the transfer station moves funding is part of the service that the township provides. And the question becomes how much can we want to support it? Um, with tax money versus how much revenue do we want to try to make it generate on its own? And essentially limit the amount of money that it's, that it's losing. So we can raise prices to try to do that. As Nate mentioned in his report, we do have a new person out there. Uh, because there is judgment, even though we have prices, there's still judgment on specifically what, what you're charging. And there's also judgment in how often you're getting some of the bins picked up. Uh, so there's, there's fluctuations in some of how that revenue and those expenses work. So that can change a little bit from person to person. Um, but I want to see what we want to do. The, the negative feedback from this, no matter what we adjust, even if it's minor, is going to be outsized in proportion to what you would think. I'd like people to be prepared for that. Um, but a couple of years ago, the, the county did raise our fees also for any large items with stuffing. I generally call them fluffy items. It's catching on. It's not the official term, but uh, it does, does accent, essentially explain when you charge $10 for each one of those items and that's gone up to 11 now.
Yeah, it is 11. So like, if I'm looking at living room chairs, we are charging $8 for a residence. We're getting charged $11, um, extra fee plus the, the fee for the weight itself in the wrong way.
The weight itself. So we're losing several dollars on that item.
Yeah. Same with the twin mattress. That's going to be another fluffy item. That's a fluffy item.
This is something I wanted to mention too, is what you said at the end there, that updating credit gap to be increased.
Right.
Kind of goes along with having this conversation.
Right.
Everything, you know, it's going to put out.
Right. The weight, the weight charge is going to have to be nowhere on.
It is nowadays, you know. Give me some perspective on.
Okay. Uh, and I'll honestly say I've never used the transfer station. Um, so I'm going to live here a couple of decades. So. I mean, what's the typical, is there, is there, uh, it's just people like remodeling and, and that kind of stuff and using, using that. What's our?
Most of it honestly is, uh, people who don't pay for trash service because they don't have enough trash to pay for a trash service. So a lot of it's bags. Uh, but there is, I would say it's probably a nice split down the middle of recycling, trash bags. Recycling's a big one. But also there is a lot of that, the remodeling, spring cleaning, the, we have a metal bin, junk, you know, when people clean out, there's, sometimes there is a shed that somebody just tore down and you've got shingles and plywood. And so it can be a wide range of things. But predominantly I would say it's household trash and recycling.
What's that? Take back by the bag for household trash?
For household trash, there's the list down there for 13 gallon bags. $2 for 30 gallon bags. It's $3 for 5 gallon bags. It's $4. So I have memories. Uh, and then, um, for recycling, we can buy, it's $25, correct, for the pass?
Thirty.
Thirty. So a $30 annual pass, they can just come in, show their recycling pass, they can just drop off all the recycling, any Saturday or Saturday or Wednesday. It's used a lot. I would say most of it, people are just flashing their passes that belong. So a lot of people will go there, go there every ten.
They have the expenses outlined. They don't have the revenues. Um, but I could share that spreadsheet for.
I'd just give looking for perspective on this.
Yeah, it's a semi-special operation. So I didn't particularly want to raise the prices during my term because it'd be a lot of, uh, negative feedback, but I kind of deal in negative feedback. So, uh, this, I mean.
I would say there were five load, five dumpster loads in January and that's with it being open one just Saturdays. So in the warmer months, it's.
There is a decent amount.
Not double, but almost.
At this point, just, just because of the finance, I think that, uh, the reasonable and responsible thing to do would be to adjust at least, at least somewhat, at least on some items, uh, to a certain extent, some of the prices up. So.
Do you have the press system there?
Yeah.
If I can go grab.
Does the board want to move forward with that, adjusting some of those prices? It makes sense to do it as the budget.
I would agree with that.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll tackle that. Um, so I'll still kind of benchmark the expenses in there as far as the budgeting goes. Fluctuates a decent amount, um, from, from year to year. So it's something that will. Uh, also, small note, wrote, wrote it to myself to remind myself. Um, I might have overcorrected a little bit on roads, which all of our projects are going through the ERPA funds. But I have to make sure that there's going to be enough funds there to adequately cover grinding expense as well. Uh, and so I don't want to, I don't want to cut that too much. So I'll probably increase, um, the road just, just a little bit to make sure we're good on that. Uh, there can always be a quarterly budget adjustment, but I'm tamped, um, to not need that. Uh, which brings us around to a big one, which are raises, uh, for wages. And so between the working session and the following staff leading, came up, I wrote notes on five, five different options on this. I have one being a bell curve wage increase fund. Um, one being cost of living averaged over five or 10 years. Um, three being an experience scale having grades in steps. Four being cost of living given during the annual budget and individual merit given at annual hire date with a review. And number five being a 2% per year, uh, increase or cost of living, whichever is higher. Alright, and those can obviously be mixed and matched a little bit, but, uh, those, those five are at least somewhat decently separate. Each one has upsides and downsides. My prefer, what I would prefer is for everyone to agree, uh, on something and like it. Um, it's, it's difficult to, um, in achieving that. I wanted to get the board's opinion on what seems like it would be reasonable and a good way to move forward.
2% or cost of living is just higher. And it's, that's what you expect.
Objective.
Yep.
Um, do you like that one?
Yeah, I like that.
Would you say, Michael, do you like that one too? Any thoughts, Scott? I know you had talked about the bell curve.
I'm not a big fan, but I'm not a big fan of that. Automatic.
With us being such a small township and not everybody gets reviewed by the same people. Um, me reviewing my deputy, Tracy reviewing her deputy. We just wanted to be consistent throughout the township being that there's only what, seven of us on a given day. Just to make it fair across the board. And there's no.
And we don't pull together a lot. So it, it's hard to separate, you know, to say one goes over and above more than another one when it's three.
It is.
Kind of.
I'll agree with you.
I couldn't have did today without her and Heather.
Yeah.
They helped me. It was, it was a crazy day.
It is, it is difficult. It is difficult to, um, have those conversations about, uh, your high performers and then the, the people that maybe need, uh, some encouragement to perform better. Um, as, as equitable as 2% for everybody or cost of living is, it, it takes some authority out of your hands too. You're giving, you're giving up, you're giving up authority. You're giving, you're giving up, uh, some leadership. Characteristics, being able to tie, uh, pay to performance. Uh, and, and, and we're talking about small, really small amounts. We're not talking about thousands and thousands of dollars really. But that's, that's kind of, and then that's kind of the world I can't come from, right? That, uh, pay and performance, uh, really go hand in hand. So. That, that's.
You could still do a merit, uh, annual, right? I mean, if we have their one-year review and if we wanted to. We could support that because we're going to notice that. There's so few of us.
So then that's option two.
It's, the, it's for an adoption for.
Yes, I see that.
It's some, yeah. The cost of living averaged over five or 10 years. I guess you have to make a decision on is it five or 10 or is it?
Correct. It would have to be decided what it is.
There were, there were years where, uh, inflation, I mean, the cost of liv, the cost of living, um, you have to be careful. There, there is a chance cost of living could go down. Then where do you get this?
So if you go with a two-year base mass and then cost of living, if it's above that, like option number five, then you don't run into that problem and adjust for it. If you average out over five or 10 years, that shouldn't be a problem either. I highly doubt we'll go into a deflationary economy in my lifetime, but you never know. So, how's it going, Lane? Yeah, you can come up, take your seat.
Sorry.
Understand.
On the record note, we arrived.
Even counting.
Say no connect.
0.75.
Oh, that was 10 years?
10 years, 0.75.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But I will, if I may. At the floor for a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would adamantly, uh, oppose number three. 14 years, zero. 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 Saying that again, nobody heard. Zero performance raising. For me, 14 years. Zero. It's not personal. It's for everybody here. You guys may be going. If we're going to start this, start this now. Not for me, for all the ones that are young. Right?
Right.
It's nothing against you. I told all of them, I had nothing against them. 14 years. First four years, no raises. Then got two more in the remaining 10. I'm not even blaming you. This is not about the money. I am not about the money you all know. I sat in a board meeting and begged you to stop. Because it was kind of a political stupidity. I'm not going to do that. But if you're going to be consistent, be consistent now. Whatever you decide, decide it right now and think about it. Because all you're going to do is hurt the employees long-term. You as well.
I think so.
If you don't value your employees, they're going to go away. They do that.
You can't attract new people.
I'm just too stubborn. I won't go.
I feel that.
Kick me out, you're out of town. But I want you to understand that if you want to look at this as an experience, I think the bell curve is very hard. It, that's it. Even creating anything we do. I think, and employees have spoken to all of them. Kind of the. Spoiler, I guess. But, uh, I don't want to see these guys again next, next January, we get a new group in and they hate me. Okay, zero rates. Okay, fine. Hate me, right? It's, it's, it's too personal because we don't, who do I report to? I report to the board. So I mean, I have to have a meeting in front of all seven of you. I don't have a problem with that. But you all have to evaluate me, but, but a third of you probably don't even know what I do. And I'll be honest with you, two-thirds of you don't know what I do. Right? I mean, Jeff knows the three electants know. And I'm not saying anything different by any means to any. Why, I want it to be fair and equitable for the employees that do work hard. Right? She's taken on extra things. He's done extra things. He's, we've all done extra things.
Sorry.
But it's based on what you think, right? We had this discussion. It is nothing against you. I asked very honestly, does he have a job description? No. I have a four-page job description. For me, four pages. And it explicitly says what a building will not do. If we can't have that, how can I base his experience, base his merit if he just goes, I'm Stuart Horn. Not saying he does that. I'm saying that's the potential. So we have to start this. We need to start it day one and start fresh. For everybody. And it can include me. I have a problem with that. But I think I speak for all the employees. If, if we don't know, we don't know. How do we get there? That's why I ran the 2%. And I ran, I ran over 10 years. And you're right. There was a year we were at 0.07. There was a year where it's 13%. And we all like that to come back, right? Is 13% pay raise? Heck yeah, right? But in averaging out over the 10-year, it came out to 2.75. So we're pretty close if we, if we find, if we blew that 10-year average. I don't know if we want to stick to that because what's your longevity? And that's what you have to look at, whether longevity of our employees. Right? In, in theory, everybody has a four-year contract. Honestly, because the new board can come in and say, you're done. Right? She may not be the, the, the deputy next, next cycle. She's the only, and if she's not the deputy, she's an administrative assistant, but administrative assistants are also deputies. Well, then she has another job. So how do you, how do you base that? So this isn't, to me, a simple, oh, I think it should be this because we don't know what we don't know. We have to make it, in my opinion, I'm sorry I'm speaking behind a curtain, but I think this needs to come out for all of you that aren't here all the time to see how it goes on a daily basis. Yeah, you know, and I go, oh, you see the flashing lights. Okay, we don't know what I'm doing, right? You see Nate Almoeen. Right? He goes to board meeting here to, to zoning meetings. Like, I do all those things. You see that. But it's hard for you to judge what we can do. And again, I'll use me as a perfect example or a name. Who do we truly report to? Mine says the board of trustees. So if, if you're going to give me an evaluation, I want all seven of you to do that. Only fifth. So that's what we have to decide. That's why I think when we talked about it as a group, right, on Tuesday, we had our staff meeting. I think that, that, though it doesn't seem like a lot, that 2% or whichever is higher, to me, seems the most fair if we're just going to say it's the easiest out, if I could say it that way. I don't mean that we're, we're trying to cheat the system. I think it's the easiest way where it makes it more accountable. And I get it where you're coming from, Scott, from a business, exactly. I see it all the time and I understand it completely. And we tried, we even tried it at the firehouse. It doesn't work because people's lives, it just doesn't work that way. That's why we come up with the flat rates. It just makes more sense.
Yeah, I'd be okay with like the, the average.
And, and I think you take it, I think you take it every year and you take and you dropped that last year. We had.
Right, right. You would, you would just get rolling.
It's a continuum. Yeah, it's a continuum. Whether you do five or 10, but. That's why I think the cost of living, 2%, or you said 2% or whichever is higher.
Yep.
Is the easiest. Are some years going to? Are they French? Think? Yeah, they are. Because we might get that 0.07. Yeah, I don't know if that ever happens, but we could. It was only what, 2019, we had a, a 0.07. Like whatever rate they're offering. Is that right? So I, again, I just want you guys to, to. So I again, I just want you guys to 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 think about all of it. I don't, I'm not saying rush to judge. I I think I I wanted to speak for all the employees because it's just easier. And I just, you know, we all kind of talked about it. I mean, Amy's not here, but she was kind of in agreement with it all as well. I just wanted you to have some, from from our perspective, if you say that the employees, I can't speak for for Nate's guys, but because they're not here. I mean, for the ones that are, they're here, you're around. To me.
Like it's something solid. Like I think this is what it's gonna be instead. Right now, it's
Meh.
Nothing's written, right? Nothing. You don't know what you're doing.
It's difficult. We've been trying to improve the system, but by the time, by the time you get it sorted out, you're you're switching over boards, which does make it difficult. And the power structure here is weird. I've drawn it on the whiteboard before. We've eliminated the whiteboard. But the power structure is is very, is very weird. Um, so like Alan's point now, the the head authority in the township is a seven-person board. So it's a it's a seven-personality board that doesn't oversee an executive, it oversees the township itself. Where executives have more daily possession of the organization, uh similar to the employees where they're actually possessing the organization. Um, but they don't necessarily have the power that the board does, you know? So so it's an odd, it's a it's a difficult thing to sort out, obviously. I have not sorted it out and I'm over three years in. Um, so I mean, we have, we have employee review here coming up in March, six months of review, which has been a decent amount of turnover. And you know, we've done a raise with that before and I think that looked like it was working good. Hopefully, if the employees stay the same, that doesn't actually become uh an issue. And so at that point, the raise is kind of just beginning. Budget comes back around. Reasonable. And I think the reason a lot of these more bureaucratic organizations go in this direction is and as an attempt um to decrease uh internal, both in the authority, so in the board itself, but also among the staff, try to uh decrease tension, essentially.
Can I say something?
Yes.
There's two things. If I'm just kind of looking outside in, uh as one of the employees, it's hard for me to do that, but I'm just, I really try to just take a broader look at it. I get the automatic whatever percentage. It's just if you were to look at it from the outside, where's the incentive to work harder? And I'm not saying that I would ever do that because I'm kind of like chief. I obviously do care about the money because that's really the only reason I'm here, but at the same time, I really love this job. So it's it's in between that and I just feel like there should be something in place for merit. Um, that's just my opinion. Like for example, I'm gonna be the liaison or whatever the word is for this park and rec board. And I have to I have to create agendas and I have a lot of information that I have to create for them. They all get paid for that meeting, but I don't get anything extra. But I'm not saying I want a million bucks, but I'm just saying, you know, I feel like there should be some of like a we we trust you with this responsibility, so we are gonna reward you because of that. Not necessarily like a pat on the back reward, but just like a percentage or whatever it happens to be. And I don't, I'm not like.
And and the trouble is, we don't, we're a government, so we don't have more money coming in. You know, oh yay, we.
We're now launching products.
Right.
Right. We we get what we get and we don't throw a fit. And so it it makes it hard to establish um reasons and establish merit-based things when there there isn't a funding source for it.
Are uh are are merit bonuses something that would be allowed? I mean, maybe we have it in the budget where there's just money set aside. Not that it has to be spent every year, but it's just there. If you have an employee that is exhibited above and beyond and it can be uh verified, I mean, is that, would that be allowed?
Like a one-time bonus?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I mean, you know, you could say, hey Nate, this last season, you did a great job. Here's why we're saying you did this. And maybe the board makes the decision that who gets that? And uh he gets a bonus check. I mean, it it's possible. We can do that. So it really comes down to how? Uh essentially, it comes down to the details of how would it really work? Uh so and then whether it's doing what we want it to do. Because so going based off that of uh any any type of merit system is obviously to encourage merit. So that's what we're trying to encourage, but there's there's a potential downside, I think, of internal tension in the organization over it too. I think it probably, it probably balances out. Maybe not well. Yeah, and and that goes back to being such a small group uh that uh, you know, the the bell curve probably wouldn't work because there's you're such a small group that personalities can leak into that big time and do reviews and all that. And so, you know, whether somebody's doing a wonderful job or maybe a terrible job and you you still are friends with them, so you review them well, anyway.
Well, and you know, I can argue Heather is does the cemeteries. She's gone onto the historical society board on in her spare time to to do that, to better our township, to better her her understanding and give, you know, them information. And so, you know, that's over and above outside of our hours. You know, she she does things when there's a Saturday funeral. She'll show up and make sure things are good or a Friday because we're off on Fridays. So, you know, it it goes, how do you, how do you then say, well, you you haven't done anything outside of work time, so you don't get the merit. But at the same time, I don't expect every people to to do that either.
And we also have hourly versus salary.
Correct.
Right.
I don't get compensated company meetings, period. Then my contract says if you're not as required, I'm gonna be here. I'm here. Do I like it? Nope. It's here.
That might, that might be obvious.
I'm not. If 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 you say this is my job duties, I have two choices.
You do.
Right? What are my two choices?
Stay or die.
Right, right? And and I'm not, I'm not causing argument. We have to look at it from different perspectives, right? She's an hourly employee. If she's acting on behalf of the township, are we breaking laws by her being there and not being compensated?
I don't get paid.
Is that F S L A stuff?
That's what it makes me.
I don't see it.
Yeah, that's why I don't get to sit over here.
But then, but then the three of us sit here in a monthly meeting and we don't get compensated, but we are compensated in our annual salary. I I won't even bring up that whole joke, right? But it's like Tracy, eighty-one thousand dollars?
Yeah.
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 Right?
But but how do you, how do you continue, how do you continue to encourage someone to go above and beyond? I mean, she sees the need, she's going for it.
It's the personality.
Well, but I I know, but somehow I think that needs to be recognized and if possible.
We all wear. So I I'm special assessments on top of taxes.
I know.
It's above and beyond. There used to be one person years ago here that did just special assessments. And she quit, it falls under treasure. So now I'm special assessments and taxes and we all wear multiple hats.
And I I come from a government job where for years it was talked about, oh, if you get into this field and get a specialty, you get certified in this, that we're gonna pay you extra. And that never materialized. And and I did a lot, and and the reason I did those things is because I enjoyed them. I liked it. And I, it was fun. So the money really wasn't the big part of it. It was just that I, you know, it's more that I had more skill sets, but yeah, so this the state of Utah, I tried that and it just never went anywhere, so.
If I could just say one more thing, can't let it go. Uh and I don't mean it in a negative way at all. I promise that. Said you get what you get, you don't throw a fit. You guys have, since I've been here for about eighteen months, you guys have given yourselves around seventy-five hundred dollar raises, the elected. So I don't know. If you get what you get, you don't throw a fit.
How do you figure that?
Because when I came, you guys were at forty-two, five, and now you're at fifty.
We will be. We aren't right now.
Well, that's, I mean, yeah, in general, correct.
And like I said, I mean, no disrespect. I'm just saying that the get you get what you get, you don't throw a fit, doesn't apply.
You know, you know what the normal treasurer makes in uh Muskegon County?
I don't wanna get into an argument.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking you.
I don't know.
Eighty.
A demonstration of why it doesn't work. So I actually had an employment lawyer. We had a six-week investigation of an offhand comment between two employees. And I lost essentially an entire sum of trying to improve the maintenance department, so that was interesting. But um I asked that employment lawyer a- as we're going through that, like, tell me um a governmental organization that works well. No matter where it is, I will travel there, I will job shadow them, and I will take all of how they work. And she couldn't come up with one. Um, the employment lawyer that specializes in municipalities does not know of a municipality that works well. So.
So what did we just sign up?
Uh, well, we haven't in particular. So we've had three people, we've had three people say that they're interested in the two percent per year or cost of living, whichever is higher. But then you also mentioned.
I'll I'll go with number five.
I'm good with two or five.
Okay, the cost of living average or the cost of living uh or with the two percent basement, essentially?
Yeah. Just so that it's a set, everybody knows going into it what what they're for.
Any strong opinions, Wayne?
I I uh I know it came in a little late, but uh, I mean, just from hearing that, I mean, I I agree, yeah, two or five, like, this is kind of a set number, what people can look forward to, to see. Yeah, it's, I know the people that are making more, gives them more because I've worked in the same thing at the my uh machinist job, that percentage rate is, yeah, the guys are working there for thirty years, yeah, they got way more raises than I did. But that's how it is. I mean, it's a little, it's a little different here too, like if yeah, we do have some turnaround on some more hourly stuff. They can kind of, they know, they can kind of catch up a little bit there. I mean, not everybody up that sits up here is on here forever, but
Correct.
I don't know if there's like a base page, I can't, or if it's just whatever we set the um like for the elected officials, it it just stays the set thing, whatever we set it at for the next people that come in?
It gets, it gets, it gets reviewed every year. So in how I would like to make those decisions or all decisions is based on market. Right? So it's, I don't know, Netflix operates essentially, but it's there, they go by top of market and supply and demand. Um, based on how they would perform in the job. And I see that as same thing for the elected positions. Um, so which is why I propose races in there is to attract people, hopefully, or to not limit them out of it. Um, so that we can have a decent amount of competition in these elections for these positions. Uh, so it's essentially a supply and demand market-based idea. But uh difficult. All right. Any other strong opinions on this? We're slanted towards a two percent basement and cost of living increase. Any other thoughts, questions, ideas, comments, concerns on any other part of the budget? We'll see it again at the March meeting as a discussion item and then end of March, March twenty-third, we have the annual meeting. We will be voting. People can show up and overrule us on the raises for the three elected positions if they want. Um, and then also the board will be passing the budget at that meeting.
I share something about the reason. Okay, sorry, just as as another one of the people who is an employee, um the reason why, and and Chief was saying, like, he was kind of speaking for all of us, with the two percent um or cost of living, whichever one was was the better, is because when the board switches out, like, like he was saying, I could potentially not be deputy. The clerk would have to say, yep, I want you to be my deputy. They might not know me, uh they might not understand all the things that I do. And so it could take like a good solid year before we've formed that relationship, like, hey, now you know what I do, let me help you do what you do. And then, you know, so it could be potentially a couple of years even before they're like, yeah, actually, I do see and appreciate all the things that you do. I don't do it, I don't do it for the money. I don't. Um it is nice to get that ad void every once in a while, like, hey, I see you, I see the actual things you're doing. And it doesn't have to be drastic, but having that little bit in there does give you the incentive to go, hey, you know what? This is what I've accomplished this year. Let me see what I can do next year. And so I get where you're coming from with saying like, yeah, merit is important. It is hard in this structure to do it. And so that's why my suggestion was having the review. I went into my review with a letter saying like, hey, this is what I brought to the table. This is what I would like to accomplish in the future. And this is what I think I might potentially be worth. You know, can we, can we do like a fifty-step raise, twenty-five step raise, whatever? And then they have the opportunity to say yes or no. But I thought that that was, that was my spiel on it. Like, merit is important, but it is super hard in this structure to be able to do do that alone on its own.
I do think that one-year review is important. Like the first six.
The one-year is a six month.
Six month, uh the six month. I I do like having that because then you can, at six months, you get an idea of what areas people they work on or not work on. You can get from if you feel needed that kind of merit. Yeah, you're catching on, great. Or yeah. Sorry, next, next time.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on the budget? Thanks. Food sovereignty. In late twenty twenty-two, it passed us and put it into the general code as ordinance. There are arguments for and against it, and if we even have the authority to do it, we'll certainly come up and try to get that about. Um, but I think it's a reasonable reform to attempt to move forward with, obviously, and it's operated mostly as an operator uh in this role. But I really prefer uh to take some meaning out of this as a reformer. This would be uh attempting uh to lead the way on a state level before getting out this on on a ballot, some version of food sovereignty. So I want to stay the board's interest on potentially trying to get it on the August, November ballot. Or some version.
I'm not sure people are gonna understand. Understand what they're reporting.
I highly doubt that people won't understand what they're voting on in general. But.
It's wrong.
But the food sovereignty one, I think the the idea is that you have the right to grow and trade food. Um, produce and trade food. I I think. Yeah, I I think in a general sense, people would get the idea of it. Obviously, sovereignty is a is a big weird word, so as far as that goes. But um, you know, the the right to produce and trade food, something like that, would would get the notion across in fairly straightforward manner. Any strong fors, strong against?
Not strong either way.
Agree with that. Something now, right?
We passed an ordinance in the general code in late twenty twenty-two. As a one that's uh included in the
Right.
That's right.
It's an ordinance.
And and it's an ordinance, so it's essentially the type of laws that the township can pass. Put it out on the ballot, I assume it happens to the general populace, but people would be voting on it definitely. Which I think gives it a stronger foundation if you choose.
If it's.
The ordinance still stands. The ordinance will continue to exist.
No, that's kind of just giving them the general direction, is that a week I would put it in there?
Uh, the ordinance is detailed.
What the ordinance stands for, it just kind of gives it the details or direction for the ordinance is.
The ordinance is is wholly self-contained on its own at at this point.
Would that become part of a charter? How order not necessarily?
I don't believe it's become part of the charter. It would just be more strongly enforced. Essentially, then it would have to go back on a ballot. So as of now, to change the ordinance, and just that it's come before the board, board can change the ordinance. At that point, because the people had voted on it to have been placed, the people should vote on it to change it. So it makes it more.
I like it.
Stable, I believe. Anything else on that? So mission of uh township, we've talked about this, uh eternal last few years. Uh, is a is a general sense, right? The idea of protecting citizens' rights from other governments, from other citizens and from the government itself uh is a good framework and that various services are provided after that. Uh, Maharu society, or a highly advanced civilization, usually uh is pretty expansive on the services. In our employee policy procedure manual at current states at Dole Township, our vision is to respond to the needs of residents promptly, efficiently and with a desire to serve those who are in reality our customers. Uh, I think it's a good sentiment that essentially provides uh direction uh attitudinally, but lacks content. And therefore, you would need to know the the context of how the township operates, uh the history of them, the power that they hold, um the power enabled um to townships by the state, which is fine, right? Bill Walsh won five Super Bowls with the San Francisco Forty Niners without admission statement, all right? So uh it it's just cultural based. Um, but this idea that um to help support a mostly stabilized society, we're moving toward liberty to the extent and at the rate that is culturally acceptable, um is how I've been operating and how I believe the township should ideally operate in practice. Um, and I wanted to see for any uh other thoughts, notions, ideas, comments or concerns by the board on that. Is there anyone on that before we move on? There's something you want to do with this? So we wanted to get people's people's thoughts on it. Now we could change the employee policy and procedure manual or something like that. Um, but I think that is significantly less important, right? So, okay, well, the the founders, right, talk about the idea of parchment barriers. You can have something written on paper that's irrelevant um to actual society if it's carried out in practice. Then it is the the reality that exists. Um, so I think it's important to have an idea of how we're trying to operate, what the goal is. But not that we necessarily need to pass some sort of resolution on it or anything like that.
Well, anything that gives us uh boundaries, not a not necessarily bad thing. You know, if if you look at it from a boundary standpoint, it also could be um a liberating standpoint too, so. It does verbalize where we like to go as a township. I think that's important. Uh, vision is um, it's a, it's another form of of vision, not just coming flowing out of your head or the board's head. It's uh something that's on paper that we can um you could look at and say, does this, does this apply kind of thing, so. Comes to vision, I'm all about that, so I like it.
Anything else? Second public comment, uh if anyone has anything they would like to say, yeah, come on up.
Karen Fowler from seven sixty nine in Lake Grove. I just, I'm back here about the historical society and uh fact that we have our room ready and we are very close to accepting items for our museum and we'll have some hours and things like that. Um, I don't know, did I, I told you where it was gonna be, didn't I? Yeah, in the church, in the little room, um when you go in the church, the pews and everything were off to the left, there was a little room there. So we've acquired some cape, there's some bookcases and et cetera, and we're getting ready to put our things that we've collected in there. And we're we're eager to take things. And if you know anybody that's been a a long term resident, we have a forum, kind of a fun forum, which I gave Christie because she was born and raised in Twin Lake. So um we're doing that too, so. Eventually, I hope you stop in and see us.
See you.
Yes.
Uh, fifty four ninety Main Street.
It's a long time, it's a long time coming and we're not anywhere near done.
It's no meeting at the library.
What? Yes, and we meet at the library, thank you, Rachel, third Wednesday of the month. And we welcome everyone. You have anything to share? Thank you. Me too, real quick. On the transfer station, are you doing the passes this year, the free?
I blame not doing the passes the same.
Okay. You haven't started on me? I mean, it's first year, so.
We go by the fiscal year, so it's starting April first. Yeah, I think it's kind of odd not by the calendar year, by fiscal year.
Okay, I just thought, why you brought it up, I thought that was something that people, some people still don't even know we have, so.
Yeah.
Okay. No.
Okay.
Got something to say.
Hi, we just took your uh local public library, uh librarian, and uh just, yeah, we wanted to remind people about the historical society meets there every Wednesday. And our events, we support them. Um, I talked to Jeff about this in spring. We're talking about having that every Wednesday. Um, or the library parking area is gonna be available to public, kind of a neighborhood meet and greet kind of thing. And so if there's something like information about the transfer station, which I personally use and have ever since I've moved up here, um and a lot of people don't know, not aware of it, I do not pay for regular coffee service. I only use the transfer station for everything. And I appreciate that it's there. But if you want to get that information out and want to have a day where you come to the library and, or we could set up a day every month where the township one of you is available for an hour or two.
I like it.
And uh share any information, you know, um you want to buy your pass, you don't have time to get to the office here? If you want to do that there at the library, I am open to those type of things.
That rolls into what I was gonna um charge the board with. Um, we need to increase our uh voter turnout. And and I I need ideas on how to do that.
Yeah.
And Tyson was gonna be one of them, um so that I need.
If you want to do that, we are happy to have you. We've had uh public officials come in before, um.
I just have people to vote.
They, you know, they don't talk about themselves. They talk about what's available that they can help you with in the government uh as a governmental unit. And so, yes, I thought that's the sample balance up in the window. Those people did sign and ask me and all the things. So that's what we're here for.
I will call you tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, if you can call me at nine fifteen, Chris, we're ahead of. Drill.
Something you know.
So, yes, so that's. Yeah, so that's the, yeah, that's the.
Okay, perfect.
And next month, Rachel will have, as long as you get it to me, the Wednesday before the meeting, a report uh in our.
Yes. All right.
I have one thing. Uh, the fireworks committee meeting at Michelle Timmer's house. Um, she's still looking for people to join this committee. There's, I think, four of us. Scott, myself and Michelle and her husband. I don't know if there's anybody else, but it's.
I I reached out to.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. And so that's at six thirty at Michelle Timmer's house on Lake Shore Drive.
You have a wire? You can give me the email later.
I don't have it. She just texted me and said, I need you. Uh, that is Tuesday, February twentieth, six thirty at Michelle's house.
Does she want to help me for the?
It's on Facebook. It's on Facebook. It's on Facebook, so she texted me and so. And I think one day I returned over seven hundred cans, myself, my husband and I, so.
Good job.
We, it was a couple trips, but we emptied that trailer. Yep.
And they're done then.
Any anything from anyone? And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Posted by Michael, do we have support? Support by Christie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.